Everyone, good evening. My name is Pat Washington. My address is on file. I actually just wanted to take a few minutes to address the board, President Barrera, Superintendent Koba, and the rest of the board. I want to take a few minutes to thank and appreciate your San Diego Unified School District Community Police Officers, or whatever these fine people are called. I've been to a number of board meetings, as you know, and what I applaud them for is the way they're able to be kind and gentle and friendly to all of us regardless of our demeanor. This staff that you have working in this auditorium every week or for the various meetings are always well, very respectful, very kind, and very generous to all of us. And I think you've done a great job with this staff. So whoever's in charge of the community service police officers should be commended for having selected these outstanding individuals, and I hope that they continue to work with us and be the kind of people that they are. They are a good example for the rest of us to follow.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you very much.
They are.
They are.
Okay, Raz and Tammy Ottman, Donnie Taylor, and Terry Eng.
How you doing? My name is Raz Ottman, and I would like to know why my wife, that's disabled, cannot is not allowed to park in a disabled parking space at Walker Elementary.
Okay, so Superintendent, could we follow up on that issue? We'll get you an answer. Thank you. Okay, Donnie Taylor or Terry Eng?
Good evening, Board. How you doing? My name is Donnie Taylor. My wife and I have three children who attend Valencia Park Elementary. Burbank Elementary, which is literally a minute from my house, is right up the street from my house, but we choose to drive our kids to Valencia Park because we believe in the magnet program there. Our kids, which are in the 4th grade and one who just was promoted from preschool, who will be going to kindergarten next year, will hopefully, with your help, can benefit from the outstanding curriculum their sisters are being taught. The shows our kids perform at include the Music Man Junior, December Nights, the MLK Parade, and at the school board meetings here, which have built up their confidence, their self-worth, and teaches them fundamentals they will need later on in life. With the budget we had last year, we made it work. We need our staff to continue to provide the experience and the knowledge to pass on to our kids so they can be productive citizens. Please think back at the productions you have gone to and how much you enjoyed watching our kids perform. It is not easy, and the kids are dedicated. Don't let them down, please. We celebrated 25 years of the magnet program. Help us see another 25. All we need is money to maintain our staff. We have and are able to fundraise to cover the other program cost. On behalf of the parents and students, please keep our program. Their future is in your hands. Thank you very much. And also, we would like to invite all of you to our next dance performance, which is July 14th and 15th at Valencia Park Elementary. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Terry Eng from Valencia Park Center for Academics, Drama, and Dance. I did speak last week, but I'm back again because we're heartfelt here. So just a couple of quick points. I noticed that the savings from the solar panels that are being installed are being used to pay for the music. They put the staff back at Crown Point and Oak Park, but interestingly enough, neither of those schools are actually receiving the solar panels. Valencia Park is having solar panels installed, and yet we are not getting any benefit financially from the money and the savings that come from those solar panels on our school. Wouldn't it be great if we could get our dance and drama staff back with those savings? It is only less than $200,000 to bring back one dance and one drama teacher only. $260,000 to bring back two drama and one dance. That's all we need. That's all we need. We can do the rest. Schools should not be cookie cutters. Not all children learn in the same way or have the same interests. That's why parents send their children to all your schools of choice, including charter schools. You guys make choices on that. You make a choice to send your kid to a magnet school because of their interest, not because one school is worse or one school is better than another. It's because that's what motivates your child to learn. The students who attend Valencia Park are there because they learn better through dance and drama. That's their passion. They go on to SCPA and CPMA. They're the feeder school. Without this program, I know that students will leave our school and this district to go other places, and we will lose enrollment. So please, consider finding the finances, and I know it's tough right now, we know that, but find a way to pay for at least three of our staff. I have some letters here that I passed out that parents brought into school and a couple of former students. We have great support from one of our partners, San Diego Stage and Lighting, so please take some time to look those over. They make good points. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Can I get our motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Please vote. Okay, we will take up Item D1. This is the material revision to the Charter of Harriet Tubman Village Charter School. Superintendent Koba?
Thank you, President Barrera. I'm going to have Mr. Moises Aguirre come forward. He's been following, tracking this initiative and has the update.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the Board of Education. This is an action item that is in front of you. Staff is bringing forward a material revision to the Harriet Tubman Village Charter School. Staff has reviewed the revised charter and is recommending approval of this material revision. It is to change the status from an Arm of the District Charter to a 501(c)(3), which helps to bring clarity and reduces ambiguity in the relationship between the district and the charter school. The district maintains similar oversight responsibilities over 501(c)(3) charter schools as Arm of the District Charter schools, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Move approval. Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? If not, please vote. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Item D2. This is our action plan to accelerate the achievement of African-American and African students. Superintendent?
Thank you again, President Barrera. Cheryl, could we please shift the presentation on the action plan? Think that each of the board members should have a hard copy in their package. There's also been posted on Board Docs since last week, Friday, I believe. What we'd like to do is to walk you through a presentation here. It gives you some background and recommendations. The overarching recommendation for tonight is to seek your approval to implement the recommendations to, in fact, accelerate achievement of African-American, African students. We want to be very sensitive to the fact that we want to go forward with immediately implementing no-cost or cost-neutral items. There are a number of requirements that would, in fact, require resources, and the intent today is to not to necessarily commit to those at this point, but to explore options as the year progresses for how to find funds for those parts of the action plan. You also should have in your package and also a part of Board Docs was a listing of the areas where there is cost. The overall cost is $3.5 million. About $2 million is in one area dealing with parent centers, but the staff and the community workforce team believes that the vast majority of the items where there is no cost or cost neutral can be, in fact, acted upon in the near term or planned and then acted upon to further detail.
So Superintendent, just to clarify, your recommendation tonight is to move forward on the cost-neutral or no-cost?
That's correct. And to continue to look for, yes, thank you.
Move approval. Well, we'll do the presentation, but that's fine. We've got a motion.
A second. Okay, thank you. Cheryl, have you got the remote or if someone has and can forward the slides? I'm going to start it all off. Okay, Sid, if you want to be at the podium. And we'll go to the next slide. I'm going to provide you the background, the introduction, and then come back at the end and wrap it up. But if you go to the next slide, please, Sid. We actually have five segments that we want. There should be a table of contents slide before you got to that one. I think we moved a little too quick. Okay, there we go. There are five areas to this presentation. The last one is, in fact, a backup with a lot of different material. I will walk you through the history and why we're here tonight. I think Sid will build on that with explanation of the moral imperative, and then we'll move right into the action plan, which is a breakout of four parts, four key areas that were developed by the Association for African-American Educators and a community workforce over 18 months ago, and then we'll wrap this up with a conclusion. Two points to be made about the way the text is put together. In the lower-left corner, there will be some slides that make reference to an attachment, Attachment 1, Attachment 4, and that, in fact, relates to all of the background material for further detailed explanation. And the other formatting note that I would share with you all is that where we have italicized and bolded areas, we're referring to a cost, and you do have a breakout of the cost areas. So let's go forward to the next slide. Next slide, please. If you recall, it was back in the '90s, a point in time where there was a blueprint, and that was the term used for identifying strategies for advancing learning and teaching and learning strategies for elevating the academic excellence of our African, African-American students. That blueprint did go away to some degree with remnants throughout the district and various policies and programs, but as a deliberate and focused plan or initiative, it has not been with us in that way, shape, or form since the '90s. But in the spring of last year, Association African-American Educators and a community team did, in fact, present to the board a updated focus, a new strategy, and that was a result of a long-developed, many-hours, over-many-days creation of a plan. And that plan was brought to you, received and accepted by all of you with a tasking to work with the community, to build a task force that, in effect, would come back with an action plan. In the fall, right after school opened, we came together for the first time, and in your attachments, you will find, again, an extensive list of the different community organizations as well as district staff that participated. And we have met, almost with no exception, monthly, and in one or two months of late particularly, met a couple times each month to share where we were in building our plans. This last fall as well, in November, as a reminder of all the work that had taken place and your approval of the action, we came together to seek the board's ongoing concurrence that we would have this action plan developed. So that's a little bit of the history. If we could go to the next slide, please. Clearly, the focal point, the priority is to put a strategy in place that would, in fact, create academic excellence for our African, African-American students. And we do see this as a call to action, a sense of urgency, and we use the term here, moral imperative. And there are any number of performance indicators and behavioral indicators that underscore why this action plan has come to pass. More detail to follow in the second section, but we recognize that there are, in fact, chronic achievement gaps. There are notable disparities in outcomes for performance. We also recognize disciplinary issues. These are among the factors with more to follow for why we call out a moral imperative. We wanted this to be a grassroots, inclusive, and a transparent effort, so you'll find on the next slide, if you would, Sid, a very good inclusion of different parts of our community, included in our staff were central office, campus, collective bargaining, representation, folks from different backgrounds, as well as positional authority in and out of the camp, of the San Diego Unified School District. And it has a very good support across the board there, and that's what's underscored in this slide number six. If you would, go on to the next one, please. I'm now going to turn it over to Sid to talk about that moral imperative in greater depth.
Thank you, Superintendent Koba, Mr. Barrera, board members. By definition, moral imperative addresses something that must happen because it is the right thing to do. As we have diligently worked at developing this implementation plan in response to the blueprint to accelerate the achievement of African-American and African students, we clearly understand the ramifications or consequences for our students and our society in general if we do not address the glaring achievement gaps. We realize that this is a moral imperative as well as a social and economic imperative. We looked at the current achievement data as well as attendance and behavioral data, as the superintendent mentioned, to develop rationale or context for our implementation plan, and this gives you the different areas or data elements that we looked at as we developed our implementation plan, ranging from attendance to graduation rates and on down the list. In addition to that, we looked at suspensions, expulsions, and dropout data. As we begin to develop our story, this slide gives us an ethnic breakdown of the diversity in our district, and it begins to tell the story and provide the context for our sense of urgency, with 11.8 of our total student population being African-American. To provide further context to our moral imperative, we investigated suspension rates and found a disproportionate high number of suspension rates among African-American students, as you can see, at 21.5% in comparison to other student populations in our district, as well all schools at 9.8. Expulsions also tell a similar story, as you can see, with African-American students having the highest percentage of suspension rates in our district. In terms of graduation rates, however, as we looked at these other data elements, we discovered that African-American and African students have lower graduation rates in comparison to the district average and their white counterparts, at 78.7% in comparison to 84.5% total district. This slide, we were looking at data, CST data, specifically where it's pretty much our statewide exam, and looking at specifically English ELA results and mathematic results. In terms of this particular slide, it's giving us the ELA, English Language Arts, information, and as you can see, even though there has been growth throughout the past years in terms of ELA at 12%, we still see a significant gap between our African-American and African students and other students in our district. The gap persists along around mathematics. Again, this is the same type of data as presented for ELA, but also gives you the percentage increase, which is a lower percentage increase, 7% for math in comparison to ELA, which was at 12%. Again, another need and a glaring achievement gap for our African-American and African students. This next section of our presentation delineates the actionable items or deliverables prioritized by the four focus areas of champions of the blueprint. We are presenting new possibilities and creating new situations for our African-American and African students to be successful in our district and beyond graduation. What you will hear next from the focus area champions are ways to confront the facts previously presented and help to contribute to a system where all students learn at high levels, therefore closing the achievement gaps and addressing our moral imperative. The four areas with each area champion will be presenting their actionable items next. Area 1, me myself. Area 2, Mr. Robert Grano. Area 3, Dr. Joel Foulter. And Area 4, Ms. Pete Fernandez, will be providing the parent support information. In terms of our design, this design, we will attempt to align this initiative with other initiatives because of our situation economically and our budget constraints. We will be looking at those that have overlap and alignment and making sure that we prioritize those particular items. And then also, as the superintendent mentioned, our intent is to begin in the fall of 2011 with actionable items that are cost-neutral. Focus Area 1. Focus Area 1 had three sections or subareas. They were policies and practices, administrative practices, and teaching practices, and I will be covering those individually. First of all, we have our educational policies and practices, and what we have done there is looking at the relevant data to present to principals and making sure that we clearly delineate the achievement of African-American and African students. In addition to that, our committee will be working with area superintendents to ensure that principals, as they look at their site plans for student achievement, that they are looking at African-American and African students and those actionable items. Again, there's room and opportunity for them, even though they have been completed by the most part, the deadline has been extended, there is room, opportunity for modification. Additionally, I will be leading the ISS group in looking at the proposed policies based on the four different areas and looking at potential modifications within our current system or additions of policies and procedures that will support this effort. In terms of administrative practices, we're looking, the big piece here is looking at monitoring, monitoring the expectations and making sure that sites are monitoring the success of African, every African-American and African student in each of the school sites. We'll be working with race and human relations in developing a heightened culture proficiency awareness. They are already working with cabinet level and board members in developing that cultural proficiency, but going on and making sure that the sites are sensitive to that. Additionally, working with our Chief of Human Resources to ensure that hiring practices are fair and based on the needs of our students, and then addressing any unfair hiring practices that may be in existence in our system. Again, this will be in collaboration with human resources and all other parties that are impacted. In terms of teaching practices, working with the student programs and Accountability Office, making sure that staffs, principals in particular, are very data savvy in terms of analyzing and disaggregating their data to ensure that the needs of African-American and African students are being addressed. One of the items that we decided to put in this particular one is to make sure that we do celebrate the successes that are out there and really highlight those exemplars that are out there in helping our African-American and African students. Additionally, we will continue to support the AAAE conference and any other related conferences that would help and educate our staff, whether it's teachers, counselors, central office administrators, to help them become more sensitive and making sure that we target the needs of our African-American and African students. Next area will be by Mr. Robert Grano, who will address graduation rates.
Good evening. Robert Grano, Director for Student Programs and Professional Learning. I'm going to talk a little bit about Focus Area 2 this evening, graduation rates. The first slide that you're looking at really talks mostly about the beginning of the school year and what schools can do in order to make sure that all families, but in particular African-American and African families, are welcome at the school. We talk about orientation programs and also making sure that parents and others in the home understand that the school is really the center of the community and place that they can go to for help with their students. This particular slide also talks about gathering data from all the schools with regard to promising practices that are currently happening at schools so that that information can be disseminated to other schools and these schools can follow these practices. If you'll note, the last bullet talks about the fact that 2011, 2012 would be a planning year and 212, 213 would be the first year of implementation, although there are some bullets on there that can be taken care of this year. Our next slide mainly talks about an intake and a compact with parents. What we would like to do is to develop an intake process for African-American students and to develop a compact for all of these, all of the parents of African and African-American students. The primary focus would be to make sure that the parents understand what their responsibilities are, what the teachers' responsibilities are, the schools' responsibilities are. Again, this is scheduled for planning in 2011, 212, and will commence in 1213. Okay, if we go to Slide 23, this is a slide that really exemplifies how some of our initiatives are dovetailing. We talk about A through G in this slide quite a bit, and we want to make sure that all of our African-American and African students clearly meet the requirements for graduation, the A through G. So what we would like to see happen is for there to be a six-year plan. When we talk about a six-year plan, that plan starts in middle school and probably even before that. It's an opportunity for guidance counselors, for teachers, to meet with parents, to make sure that students are on track all the way through their middle school and high school career. We have a new system that was rolled out this year called Naviance. Naviance will help with this process. This is a process that will begin this year, and as you can see, that's a non-cost item because it is not in italics. The last bullet on this page talks about parent workshops. We'd like to see parent workshops happening for African-American and African students throughout high school so that parents are aware of what they can do to help their students, what the schools can do, and what the community can do to help. The final PowerPoint in this section, it's a PowerPoint that talks about activities that can be implemented this year. Again, we're talking about A through G. We would like to see a FAFSA workshop happen at every school that is specifically geared towards African-American and African students and their parents. We realize that's happening right now at most of the high schools throughout the district, but there needs to be more emphasis for these students. We're also very interested in ensuring that every single African-American and African student completes two college scholarships. So that would be additional time that would be spent with our African-American and African students, with counselors, teachers, vice principals, and maybe even the principals and teachers. And the final bullet that we have on this slide talks about visiting colleges starting in grades 7 through 11. We would like to make sure that all of our African-American and African students visit colleges throughout this very important time in their life so that they're familiar with college life, they're familiar with how you apply to college, and what it takes to get into college. And at this point, we will move on to Focus Area 3 with Dr. Foulter.
Let me first thank the Focus Group 3 participants for their involvement in this movement. We had a lot of spirited discussion, quite a bit of debate around the first item particularly. Also like to thank the invited subject matter experts who came and offered their insight. It's because of them that we were able to move as quickly as we did throughout this entire process. Our focus was, and it's a fairly long, sorry about that. Okay, there we go. It's a fairly long title, but it was "To Improve the Educational Progress and Status of African-American and African Male and Female Students by Understanding and Coping with Gender-Specific Needs." Now, to prepare for this work, an extensive literature review was conducted. We held interviews. We also had, as I mentioned earlier, some fairly intense debate. The first Focus Group proposal calls for establishing gender-specific courses in core middle school classes. Now, by way of overview, in 1996, there were about three single-gender public schools in the U.S. Now we have about 540 public schools that have at least one single-gender classroom. Now we have about 540 public schools that have at least one single-gender classroom. So what we'd like to do is first encourage some kind of piloting effort to take place. And the school that we selected was, was Bell Middle School. And had a chance to meet and discuss this with, with Michael Dobson, who has addressed each of these bulleted points. He's had conversations with the site governance team. He's met with staff and talked with parents and community members as well. And he's also identified teams, prospective teams, that could be responsible for teaching some of the single-gender courses. We will be very helpful and involved in, we being the central office, in providing and helping Michael develop some professional development for the staff that'll be involved, as well as recruit and assign district and community members who can support this effort. The next item talks a little bit about, here's where we believe is important for, we also believe is important for personal social areas to be addressed as well. Not only is it important to look at the instructional program, but the personal social development of, of students is also crucial. Such things as resiliency, interpersonal relationships, learning strategies, those are just a few of the possibilities. Now, here's where the mentoring and maybe some of the motivational speakers will be utilized to support our student growth and, and achievement. We'll also take advantage of district resources such as our counseling and guidance department and race human relations as, as well. And you'll see at the, in the last bullet, we want to perform some close monitoring of, of all these efforts. So we'll have our accountability, accountability office provide monthly updates on the progress of students, particularly students in, in some of the core courses. Now, as, hopefully as become evident already and will, before this, this presentation is done, we want to focus on the whole child. And with this in mind, we recognize the incredible influence of, of coaches in, in this district and, indeed throughout the country. We want to take advantage of these relationships and effort and teach our students about giving back to their communities and the San Diego community in, in general. Also like to see some increased collaborations occur between the PE department and other such offices or departments as counseling and guidance and race human relations. And we think with regular and routine meetings where such topics as equity, cultural proficiency, interpersonal dynamics are discussed with coaches, we could see some differences in the kind of relationship that, that exists between students on campuses and the coaches they, they have as well. In some cases, certainly not, not in all cases, because as I said earlier, we believe coaches are very crucial and, and do already have quite a bit of influence over a number of students. This last area, or last slide for Focus Group Three addresses special ed placements and suspensions. And these are two areas that have been well chronicled over the past several years. And you may recall that on March 29th, this very board approved the Special Ed Action Plan for English learners and students referred to Special Ed for social, emotional, and behavioral concerns. Now, we think with, with your actions and the implementation of the corresponding plan, will reduce the Special Ed referrals and hopefully disproportionality as well. We'll also be moving forward with the Special Ed Disproportionality Oversight Committee. And this committee is, is designed and will be looking at and closely monitoring the Special Ed placements, placement of African American and Latino students. And with regard to suspension, and this was a part of the research we, we conducted, across this nation, on any school, given school day, every seven seconds, there is an African American student suspended from, from school. Now, in, in this district, on average, is about one African American student a day, one plus African American student a day suspended from school. So because of these issues, we think it's important that schools are encouraged or be encouraged to implement PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. We also, and you'll hear more about this later in the month when we talk about OE3, also think it's important to develop and implement a uniform discipline policy. And again, you'll get more information on that in just a few short weeks. And part of that uniform discipline policy calls for expulsions to be approved by the pertinent or, or the prospective or respective, I should say, area superintendent. And then we've started and established, oh, about three or four months ago, disproportionate discipline committee. We've been meeting on a fairly regular basis. They've been very helpful in developing the uniform discipline policy that you'll hear more about. We're encouraging the continued meeting and, and gathering of, of that team so that we can continue talking about these issues and, and hopefully address them in a very straightforward way. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bea Hernandez, who will talk about the last item.
Good evening. Bea Fernandez, manager of Parent Outreach and Engagement. And I would also like to introduce Alnita Shannon. Alnita, stand up, please. Alnita is the manager in my department, who is the coordinator of Project Ojima, a program we've had for over two years to engage African American families and community members in the education of their children. As we, we looked at the areas in, in parent family support of the blueprint, there were actually seven areas. We realized that three actually main areas emerged. One was establishing parent centers, providing training and family engagement, and also helping schools to, oh, can you just put it on Slide 29, please? Oh, it isn't Slide 29, excuse me. And then the third area that emerged was helping schools with outreach strategies to engage the participation of African American, African families. On the first slide, we talk about parent centers. And in the research and family engagement, you read about that parents need a place to call their own. So one of the, of the strong recommendations was that every school identify a place that parents can establish a parent center, whether it's a cubbyhole, an area of a room, or actually ideally would be a room, to have a staff member to service the contact for African American and African parents. And I'm not saying necessarily it has to be a parent, a person that was paid to do this job full-time, though ideally that would be a really good thing to do, but there's someone on site that parents know they can go to for information, to ask questions for clarification. The other recommendation is the schools be encouraged to develop a family engagement plan with specific strategies for African American and African American students and their families. And this plan would be aligned to the goals in the single plan for student achievement. It's important to note that for this year, the California Department of Ed is actually highly encouraging districts across the state to actually develop this plan. So I see this as something coming down the road for us as a mandate from the Department of Education. So it'd be wonderful for our schools to begin now to actually have a plan that really outlines how we're going to work with families, specifically with African American families and African families. My department has been highly trained throughout the years to provide support and resources to schools. We are going to be using our website as a way to provide more information for schools to download. At a time with diminishing funds, we really need to find any way possible to support schools without it always having to be an individual. The second area is providing training and family, next slide, please. The second area is providing training and family engagement, leadership, advocacy, and parent education. Again, these are topics that emerge in studies district-wide and also in, excuse, not studies district-wide, studies across the country in terms of what are some of the areas that families feel they need more support in. We do a really good job, I believe, with training our families in SSC, the school site council, and other kinds of advisory groups in terms of roles and responsibilities within those groups. But families really want to know more how to advocate on behalf of their children and other children. So this is an area where this year, we began working with a group out of Washington, D.C., out of the, the Law Center, and with a promo called PREP in terms of helping families with this area of advocacy. We also want to look at this summer with our committee, our focus subgroup for committee, and look at a curriculum that we were trained in last year called Effective Black Parenting. It's an excellent six-week curriculum that's designed to help families look at education and create a college-wide culture in families. There's some other areas there. I want to point out the, the fourth bullet there, where it says that we will train parents to use technology to monitor student progress. In our formerly A through G task force, if you recall in the audit that was done by Ed Trust, one of the six recommendations was very specific about using Parent Connection and other ways to help parents monitor student progress and also as a way to communicate with families. So we're prepared, our, my department does have a, a traveling computer lab that goes to school to train parents just how to log on to Parent Connect, how to set up an email. So there's other ways and other departments in this district and schools as well that can really make an effort to train parents to know how to utilize the Parent Connect to stay in contact with, with teachers and also to monitor student progress. The last point there is also about working and identifying other community agencies. There are many groups in this city of San Diego that do parent education. We need to identify who they are, especially those that are free. There are many that are fee-based, and again, in era with diminishing school funds, we need to look at all resources, those that are free and fee-based. And in this, for this task force, we really need to look at groups that can provide information at schools or in the community from an African American and African perspective. And the last point is about outreach. Parents say that one of the reasons they decide whether or not to be involved in the school is determined by how welcome they feel at the school. So we really want to help schools look at different strategies to work with families, whether they're school-wide strategies or they're classroom strategies. And it first begins with how, working with staff to make sure that families feel welcome, training staff to make sure that they understand the value and utility of working in partnership with families. Everyone brings a gift to the table, and sometimes we just need to identify what that is in working with our communities. And again, and then the third component is those positive communication strategies. Coming from a parent that had had to struggle with my son at school with his behavior, I understand how important it is to get those phone calls that are positive, not just the ones that are negative. So sometimes we have to begin with that simple step. So these are some of the areas that we're, that we're looking at to support our African American families and especially our schools.
I will wrap up the formal presentation with a couple of slides dealing with monitoring and focus. So sit on to the next slide. What you've heard, Board, and community at large, is a integrated, multi-dimensional approach to elevating academic achievement. It takes tinkering with our policies, overall hauling, in some cases minor adjustments and others, whether it be central office administrative, or local campus teaching, or some other form of process and procedural focus. Second part of this is dealing with all the strategies that come to graduation rates. Where and when are young people becoming aware of options for something after 12th grade here? And we talked about the six-year plan from middle school on, going to colleges, making that awareness, I think, front and center early in the K-12 experience. Moving from the graduation rate, we then consider the gender policies. You heard about Bell Middle School. Just that one end of the spectrum is can you deal with kids per gender on the campus, in particular academic settings, going all the way to the athletic side of this. Our coaches fully attuned, sensitive to building a character development, as well as the academic piece of this, that goes for a positive, successful outcome for the kids. And then Bea closed with bringing the parents in. And we talked about in our community school reform, it takes, you know, administrator, a teaching staff, classified support staff, the student, and the parent. You saw some of those themes coming through our, our presentation tonight. So in this multi-pronged effort, what next? Well, the words have got to be followed up by actions. And this slide talks about some of the things we want to do. This is not, you know, produce something tonight, disband, and go off and do our thing. Rather than that, the Focus Area Champions, they briefed tonight Sid and Robert, Joe Foulcher, Bea, and others, will be meeting throughout the year on a periodic basis. We're going to take a close look, particularly at the end of, of each of the semesters, to look back in time, not wait to the end of the year to sort out how and what are we doing. The accountability office, Ron Rode's group will be key to this in collecting and assessing and sharing the data back and forth between the central office and the campuses. The task force that came together from all the different community agencies, plus the district staff, will be meeting at least on a quarterly basis. Another point in time to probe and understand what we are doing. Then I think it culminates with a representation to the board as what exactly did we do, what kind of success? So it's measurable, monitored, and I believe accountable in many different respects. So if I could go to the last slide. Interestingly, Dr. Joe Johnson from San Diego State at our last meeting talked about, you know, calling out this, calling up bluntly what it is. It's an action plan without any excuses. We need to move forward, and that's the intention. And we believe that by elevating performance in any one group of kids, we elevate for the entire district. So, you know, we're all about trying to narrow it and/or eliminate that gap when it comes to academic performance and in fact graduate the kids. Last thing I want to do before we, we move on to the, the next portion is to thank all of the Focus Area Champions, to the supporting teams, to Dr. Shirley Weber, the AAAE organization that got this off and going. And then although I don't want to overlook any one of the groups, but we had the representation from San Diego State, the Urban League, Neighborhood House, and many, many other different groups of people outside of the district that were here as well as those within. If you would, go to the next slide. Okay, one more. And just so that the public can see it, what the board already has in their package, lots of data. And all the graphs that were discussed in Moral Imperative, and then some are, are shown here, as well as the specific representation, the plan itself. It's a clearly well-thought-out, developed plan from which we just synthesized the actions we want to take to support the plan. And that concludes the formal presentation. President Brerham, board members.
Okay. So we've got a motion in a second. Ms. Jackson, do you have any?
Just very quickly, first of all, I want to thank all the participants for this initiative to bring it forward, all the hours, you know, lots and lots of hours were put into developing this. And I think the, the big item, though, is the accountability piece because we've done this before, thought we'd done, we haven't done this before, we have, but it gets lost. And so the goal is not for it to get lost this time. And my question was, when does it come back to the board? And you said on an annual basis. So this is July. Can I expect an update next Ju-, next, this is June, it's July. So many meetings here. But anyway, but in between there, you're having a series of meetings as well. And so can we get a written update, maybe six months, and then a verbal update to the board once a year?
We could certainly share the end-of-semester assessments.
Could we do the annual report back in February for Black History Month?
I, I kind of think that would, we would only be able to give you the data we have for the period of time from September to February.
Sure, but if we start the, implementing the plan now, and then the first report is in February, and then we just cycle every February?
Well, we give you a snapshot in February and the end of the year, at the end of the year. That way you can get the, the whole.
Right, but we don't get our CST test data until September, until August, September anyway, right? So maybe we do it right after the data comes out?
For Focus Area Two, who's going to be monitoring that area? I see Focus Area One, we have Dr. Sid Salazar, I, I, Dr. Grano, is that what it is? Okay. It just wasn't in my folder. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Couple of comments. Excuse me. First of all, I mean, I want to thank all the people who worked on this, and I think like some other initiatives that the administration's carried out, the whole point of having a lot of community people who are outside the district participating is, is really key. And, you know, we've reviewed this, the idea was presented a year ago, and they've gone out and done a lot of the hard work in the meantime. I think just in the presentation, the, the charts, the graphs, I mean, they tell the story very clearly. You know, certainly we have to figure out exactly what and how and why and so forth, but it, it very clearly demonstrates this, this big achievement gap that we need to narrow. And when we just move forward, treating all groups the same, one size fits all, then we end up with the same results. And I know too, I've had comments from some people in terms of, well, we're looking at one particular subgroup, to which I would say other groups can also take on this task. This happens to be the African and African American group. Other groups representing other subgroups within our district can certainly come up with plans. So. with plans specifically targeted towards those groups. I think, you know, all of this is very much in line with, but I think moving in forward more, some of the general theoretical ideas the district's promoted, but this is, I think, putting in more practical action, certainly the issue of greater parent involvement. And, you know, at the very beginning, even if it's, if there is a cost item in terms of parent centers and so forth, just having principals who actually believe in very strong parent engagement is, is going to be one big step. And what, and our operational expectations we have put in for greater diversity in, in our staff, it's more reflective of our student population. We have a long ways to go on that and so that needs to be constantly monitored and not just held out there as an idea. I think we've also started to tackle a little bit the idea of disproportionate identification in special education, a lot of other good new ideas as far as gender-specific schools and so forth. So, I mean, I very enthusiastically support the, the staff moving forward with this. I mean, in an ideal world, we would be able to pay for a lot of things that we can't. I mean, I think we face that in a lot of other areas too, but there are, we have made the motion to support moving forward with the no-cost and cost-neutral items with the idea of beginning to plan in the future for those items which do cost money.
Yeah, I'd agree. I, I obviously want to thank the, the task force and all the hard work that was put in. Just the one brief comment on what Dr. Evans just said, in the A to G task force presentation, I thought staff did a good job of identifying those specific cost items and then, you know, identifying sort of priorities and a timeline for being able to. So maybe when we come back, we could have that kind of. Okay, good. Mr. Buzzer?
Um, the, one of the things that I am really excited about, a lot of these initiatives not only help African-American students, but they help all students. Parent centers, research has shown, and I'm sure this is the foundation of a lot of the recommendations, that if parents are involved, then that'll also, you know, help other segments, other subgroups. Secondly, the, there's some research and data out there on gender-based math and science classrooms, particularly that's where, you know, if you segregate the, the female and the male students, a lot of times in math and science classes, depending upon the culture of the school and the leadership of the teacher in the classroom, sometimes the female students in the middle grades and the high school grades, they won't speak, they won't participate, they won't be a part of the conversation or the discussion or the dialogue. And so this, this is an exciting opportunity to actually see what kind of data we're going to get here in San Diego, if we explore these kinds of options. I'm kind of surprised that we don't have parent centers in all of our schools already, staffed or unstaffed. I think it's really an important initiative that we ought to try to figure out how we can make happen in all schools.
Okay, great. We've got a motion in a second. With no further comment, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Weber, yeah.
First of all, Mr. Bass is here also. It's, I'm Dr. Shirley Weber, Chair of Department of African Studies, San Diego State, but equally important, the Executive Director of the Association of African-American Educators. And we want to thank the, the task force, those who've worked very hard, the staff of this district for embracing the blueprint and really taking a very positive position with regards to it without resistance, without anything other than saying this is something important, this is something we must do. So we really want to thank the staff that's been actively involved in developing the blueprint. It's taken a lot of time, a lot of hours, a lot of serious work, and yet people have put in the time and the efforts. Want to thank our superintendent for also embracing it from the very beginning and realizing that the underachievement of African-Americans in this district and nationwide is really a tragedy and a crime against children. And so we're very, very thankful for that effort and the board itself for doing that. Want to thank all of the staff who participated, particularly three of our staff members who no longer be with us, but we do want to acknowledge the fact of Angela Bass and Tony Burks and Diana Carberry, who were leaders in many, many ways and they put a lot of time and energy into it. So we really appreciate the efforts of them as well as the other staff that will continue to work with us during this time. I want to like the, the members of the task force, the community members, to please stand because many of them are here today, who've come again to be a part of it, the NAACP, the Urban League, the Delta Sigma Theta Group, AAE, and then other community members who were just interested, who became a part of the task force. Want to thank them for all of, all of their time and work and efforts in attending many, many meetings to make it a difference. And there are a number of other members of the African-American community who are here today representing various universities, various interest groups, because they too plan to be a part of it. We believe that this, this document that you're getting ready to adopt is, we've adopted it AAA, as we said when we met with you a year ago, that we were going to do this anyway, that we wanted your participation, but we felt a sense of urgency that we had to accomplish this with or without the board's support. Unfortunately, we had that. We, we said in the meeting, and we want to keep this forever on the mind of those who are here, that if we accomplish the small things that are listed here and don't accomplish the big thing, we will not have succeeded. In other words, if we get every child to come to school every day and those kinds of things, and yet we don't change the very educational experience for children that makes them academically successful, because that's really what this is really all about. It's not really about establishing parent centers, it's about having parent involvement that then promotes academic excellence. And so we want to keep that always in our mind, that that's really what we're about. And it's not about doing a whole lot of little activities, it's about academic excellence for children. We will, we as a community will embrace this and so therefore we will be sharing it with our community, because we also think they have a central part to play in this document. We, this document is, we believe is owned by AAE but shared with you. We will also take this document to other districts because we've been asked to do that, because other districts where African-American children exist are failing. So we think that this will be a model for us in terms of looking at how not only we can do it locally, but how we can do it in a county, and we hope at some point how we can do it in the nation, because this is a concern and an issue that is everywhere in this country. And we really must address this, this issue before us. At this time, Mr. Bass, who was president of AAE at the time when we wrote the document, but also has been the lead person on our board, along with our president, Janay Peavy is still here. Janay is our new president, but Wendell was the one who was president at the time of writing the document and had became our point person from AAE to be kind of the person to continue to guide the document through the process. So Mr. Bass had something he wanted to say also to the board.
First of all, thank all of you for what you've done, approving the document, it's monumental. Thank all the task force and all that have put in a whole lot of time. I want to say a few things to you and I want you to listen real well. We are of the humble opinion that we have the right to enjoy the privileges of free men, but that we do not will appear in many instances, and we beg leave to mention one out of many, and that is of the education of our children, which now receive no benefit from free schools in the town of Boston, which we think is a great grievance, as by woeful experience, we now feel a want of a common education. We therefore must fear for our rising offspring, to see them in ignorance in a land of gospel light when there is provision made for them, as well as others, and yet can enjoy them. For not other reason can be given this, they are black. We therefore pray, your honors, that you would in your wisdom, some provision would be made for the free education of our dear children, and in duty bound shall ever pray. This is from a petition to the State Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Bay, 1787. It's a year that our constitution was approved. The call for the education of our children is 224 years old. Brown versus the school board at Topeka was 57 years ago. The Carlin case, a little over 30 years ago. We've gone through slavery, we've gone through apartheid, we've gone through laws that were implemented in this country that it was against the law to educate our children. And we still sit here today, 224 years after this, still asking for the same thing. This is taken from a book called Simple Justice by Richard Kluger, and I would recommend that every single person that's in education needs to read this book, because it chronicles the history of education in our country, in particular what has happened to African-American children. I think that we've taken a big step forward. I think that we can make a difference with our children. And every one of our children, brown, black, white, Asian, are brilliant. I didn't say intelligent, I didn't say smart, but we need to start looking at our children as brilliant. And then we ought to have teachers that see themselves as brilliant and that they walk in brilliance, so that these children see it. If we don't do something, my folk, because what we're doing right now is basically sending our children out the door to take jobs, literally, that doesn't even provide them a decent living. We've all got to put our effort into making things a whole lot better. I know it can, I know it can happen, because I know the work that we did at Scripture, I did at Scripture Ranch High School with 13 African-American males and started in March. A couple of those young men may not have even graduated, but mentoring and other things that we need to bring to the forefront with our children can make a difference. So I commend you for what you've done. I commend Superintendent Koba for being at almost every meeting, matter of fact, I think all of them, and, and led them. That, that's, that's wonderful commitment. But I'm not here to celebrate, because the gap is still there. And I, I just want you to know, 224 years we've been at this, so if you think it's going to happen overnight, it's not. And we need to be committed over the years to make certain that our children are educated. And I'm so committed myself personally, that I will give you no rest until we do something to close the gap for these children. So thank you for all that you're doing and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to move up on the agenda because we've got some speakers. Item F2, this is a direction to staff to expedite the recall of staff allowed by changes in state funding and attrition. Dr. Evans?
I'll just go to the, the bottom line of this, which is because we may be able to recall some staff, I want to publicly make sure that the superintendent and all of his staff do everything possible during this month to make sure that the teachers are recalled or recalled in time, so that they can go back to their original positions at their original sites, and also that if there are any new teachers hired, it will only be because there is no, not a single teacher within the district who has that particular credential to teach that. So just to give a little, and I think it's very important that we be very clear about what this is and is not. I know there's always a lot of information and misinformation out about this particular topic. On, on the 21st of June, the board approved the contingency plan that would allow the superintendent to restore staff positions up to value of $36 million. This was contingent on the budget being approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, that includes that amount of funding above, the 36 million that we're talking about, that was above the amount approved on our official budget date of June 28. Now, at this point, I'm bringing this up because it's going to have to be done in a very timely manner and we're not there yet, but the, the actual amount of money, and I know the CFO can speak to this more, that the district is going to be receiving has not exactly been determined. It has been established, the, the increase of $330 per pupil, but there are also cuts in three other areas. So it needs to be determined what is the, the net increase. And I know this is complicated, but these reductions need to be calculated as soon as possible, so we will know what is our net increase in revenue. Now, I just want it just to, the motion is just to make clear that's the board intention that this all be performed as soon as possible for the following three reasons. So number one, for those who are recalled, that they're able, recalled, they're able to return to their original positions before they make alternative plans, that they'll be at the original positions at the original sites for, for the stability of our schools. It also is to allow employees who are not going to be recalled to, for it to be very clear, that there are not going to be any more recalls at that point, so that they can make the decisions in moving forward that they need to make. And will also be helpful, the faster this happens, for families to make their enrollment plans based on the academic programs the school's offering and the, the class sizes and so forth. The other issue that I've been talking about continuously for the past few months is the, is the issue of attrition, meaning those who either resign or retire from the district, which in some cases, not all, but in some cases allow a teacher or employee, other staff member who received a pink slip to be recalled. So if there is a, a teacher who resigns for whom there is no available replacement within the district, this needs to be placed on a very well-publicized list, again, to make absolutely sure that no current district employee could fill that position. There's a lot of, we've gone over a lot of times how we're laying people off and then hiring in the fall. The only reason to be hiring in the fall should be is if someone has resigned for a position that no one else in the district can perform. So that is the basic intent, to, to, and specifically to direct the superintendent to do this and to provide all available resources to the Department of Human Resources. I know we've had a lot of issues and problems in, in human resources over the past several months that we've talked about. I don't see him here, but we have a new interim director of Human Resources, Lamont Jackson, who has very graciously taken on this job and, and doing a very good job. And I just want to say that whatever time commitment and cost commitment is necessary, this is so important that this be performed right in, in the coming days. So we.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Evans. Can we get a second?
Second.
Great. And we've got a few speakers, I'll limit it to two minutes a piece. Michael Martinez, Dennis Shamp, Valentina Hernandez, Cynthia Perez-Pothier, Fred Bouchard, and Blair, I'm sorry, Blair, I can't read your last name. Hatch, okay, great.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. President and Superintendent Koba, I'm one of these individuals, my name's Mike Martinez, by the way. I'm an AP teacher and head football coach at Patrick Henry High School. I received a layoff notice in March. This is, this is a difficult situation for me to be in personally, and I'm going to let you know why. I had to stand in front of half my football program this morning and inform them that they were without a head coach, most likely. I had to stand in front of some of my coaches, two of which are here today, and explain to them that most likely I wasn't going to be around. You know, it's encouraging, some of your words, Dr. Evans, but it, it has really come at a difficult time. I just received a letter from the Sweetwater District, letting me know that I was to report to work on the 18th of this month. I don't want to do that. And I understand it's a, you know, and many of you will say, well, that's going to be a personal issue and, and, you know, goodness sakes, you have a job. And trust me, I feel very fortunate that I do have a job. But I also have a responsibility, I have a responsibility to about 150 young men in my program that I've been working with for the last two years. I have a responsibility to my AP students that think they have me in class next year. I have a responsibility to my, my 15 coaches that I've assembled and put together over the last two years. And I have a responsibility to the community where I teach and also live in. You know, I know this has been difficult for everybody involved and, and I'm hoping that, that things can move rather quickly. I'm by nature a, a very private person, but unfortunately, I think my, my professional, my job has, has thrown me kind of publicly here. And we will be back next week, because I'm going to, I'm going to let you know how it's affected some of these kids and, and what's, what's happened with them. And I thank you for your time.
Good evening, board members. I'm Dennis Shamp, a laid-off teacher from Lewis Middle School, and I offer apologies to Lewis Carroll. 'Twas brillig, and the board did meet to crunch the budget once
'Twas brillig, and the board did meet to crunch the budget once again. All mimsy was the redshirt crowd with Jerry's promised gains. Beware the cuts, John Leed did state to childcare and mental health and transportation cuts as well could keep us from our wealth. Not so, not so, the teachers cried. The funding flat has been restored, and now your promise you must keep of that were in accord. And as an uffish thought they sat, the governor's bill with numbers true came into focus, clear as day, and brought to us our due. The funding came, first 44, the millions knew from ADA. Then 14 more attrition brought, and teachers cheered hooray. And hast thou slain the budget walk? Indeed, with millions more to come, should total recall win the day? And CSR at 20 to 1. 'Tis Tuesday, and the board did meet, protecting students once again. Full recall is the only way, and to that I say amen. I urge the board to look over my email from earlier today and find the same information that I found regarding the numbers that are actually available for our district and see that you have enough not only to fulfill your promise from last meeting on 6/21, but really you do have enough to recall all educators and staff tonight. I apologize for having to leave early, but as you can see, I have a scout meeting to attend. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Fred Bouchard. I'm the offensive line coach for Patrick Henry High School Junior Varsity Football Team. I'm here to support Mr. Mike Martinez, the head coach of Patrick Henry High School. In 2009, I joined Mike's staff. It was a program at Patrick Henry High School that needed to be turned around. And it's, I remember when I was walking down a ramp into the football field, it was six-period gym class, and I watched all these young girls and young men run around and using words that began with the letter F, and it wasn't welcome, Fred. I can tell you, Coach is the type of man that can turn a program around, and he's turning it around right now at Patrick Henry High School. He's 17 years in the business. He's a coach, and he's a teacher, and he cares about people. He understands with his experience, he understands about gangs and creating family atmospheres and dealing with parents who could care less, who aren't there. He's there night and day, coaching, teaching, full-time job. You know that. It's so important a man like Mike continues with this program. And I say this to you because I'm thrilled to be there, I'm happy to be there, and I'm honored to be there coaching. I love every day. I don't have a child in the program. I'm just there for the boys, for the young men. Coach told us right off the top, don't you swear on that football field. And you know what? We don't. And you know what? The kids buy right into it. They don't swear either. In fact, we make them do push-ups if they do. But, but, but it's things like that that Coach does that is, that is, well, you just can't beat. And I can tell you that we're slowly turning it around. We're going to turn this big mother around, but the only way we're going to do it is to keep a man like Coach Martinez on the staff. Believe me, he does wonders. And like when the slide said just earlier, I'm waiting for this light to go on, but when this, yeah, thank you, when the slide said, hey, you know, coaches do touch people in different ways, we do. We really do. Coach is that man. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, board, for listening today. I also wanted to relate the positive effect of retaining Michael Martinez at Patrick Henry High School. I offer a couple of different perspectives. I am a parent of a Patrick Henry High School student. My son Morgan's a sophomore, and he is looking forward to having Mike Martinez in class as a junior. He looks forward to going to football every morning, 8:00 AM, with 50 other kids where they run and lift for three hours in the morning. I also offer the perspective of a teacher at Patrick Henry High School. I was there from 87th to 2003, as a football coach and biology teacher, and I saw firsthand the effect of a on-campus, hard-working, full-time football coach and effective teacher on the community, on the students, particularly the students at Patrick Henry High School. And I also offer the perspective as a coach, I now volunteer my time to work with Mike because of his vision for the program. I support it. I think it's fantastic. Such a positive effect on so many students in his classroom and in the program if we were to retain Mike Martinez in the city schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, passes 4-0. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Let's do our Proposition S update. Brief update, superintendent?
Thank you, President Barrera. I'll ask Lee Duhrow, our executive director, for the construction bond to come forward. This is our quarterly update to the board and community as a whole. Tonight, Lee is going to give you a high-level overview of where we are in terms of projects, what's on track right now, and some spending. I do want to note that this isn't about adjusting the schedule or widening scope in any way. If we look forward into the fall, in October, we'll be back to talk about funding, the next sales proceeds, and how schedules would be adjusted. So I just want to turn it over to Lee now to do that very high-level update for everyone. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Barrera, members of the board, Superintendent Koba. Yeah, we will be coming back to the board in the October-November timeframe along with Ron Little and our district financial advisers to talk about the next bond sale, at which time there'll be an opening for discussion about the schedule and priorities. The Prop S program is very closely aligned to the district's goal of providing a quality school in every neighborhood, and also aligns with, you know, the goals of equity and that are embodied in the AAAE blueprint that the board recently adopted. We're, you know, we're really interested in providing a parity in schools throughout the district. And, you know, there's a wide range of school facility conditions, so that Prop S addresses And also, I also wanted to, we had a lot of community engagement, working with various task force, working with ICOC. We're also tied in closely to the goal of, to the district's goal of community-based reform. Citizens Oversight Committee members Gil Johnson and Leonard Pinson couldn't be here tonight, but they, they have been a part of this development, of this presentation, and they wanted to express their regrets and, and, you know, certainly will come the next time we present to you an update. Also, we, the Prop S reaches out to a number of entities, the City of San Diego, YMCA, and other entities, to maximize the use of school facilities. This slide is really an overview of how the bond funding breaks out, and some of the larger slices you see, Student Learning and Instruction includes I-21 and Career Tech Education components. There's an ADA component. The Student Health Safety and Security includes pedestrian safety, lighting, fencing, and also air conditioning. And then, of course, we have major building replacement. This gives you an overview of where we are financially. Right now, you can see the revenue expenditures and obligations to date. We've accelerated the modernizations earlier this year. And if you look at our planned current revenue compared to our obligations and projected contract awards, you can see that we'll need to sell more bonds in this fiscal year to continue the program. This slide gives you a history of our first two bond sales, April 2009 and August 2010. You can see we were successful in taking advantage of the qualified school construction bonds that were zero interest. It really helped us maximize the use of those bonds, and we're planning a next bond sale in November or January. Really, this, this is our total indicated cost slide. Really, the takeaway here is that we're on track to finish all the scope, but we do need to closely monitor the costs, and we really don't have any room to add scope. You can see we have a, you know, our best case is right about our total revenue and then our most likely and worst case. So we're right, we're right at the point where we, we're, because the program is only a third complete, we think we can finish the program on time, on budget. Prop S project, you can see we've done a lot of work to date, awarded 36 projects. We've completed 18. We will have a lot of ribbon-cutting ceremonies early in the year, next year, because of all the work that's happening this summer. And we've, because we've accelerated at the direction of the board a number of projects, we'll be awarding 30 more projects in this fiscal year that we're, we just started. College Career Technical Education projects, these are directly support curriculum, and also they take advantage of a 50% state match in funding to support these unique facilities. And they're, we're opening more this year. This is a list of the CTE projects, and you can see we've completed eight. We have seven that are in construction currently, and seven more that are in design and be heading towards construction. The I-21 program has been a great program. It's impacted all schools throughout the district, and it's a collaboration with IT staff and educators. It really changes the paradigm of teaching and learning. And to date, we've installed 2,500 Promethean boards, 40% of our classrooms, 40,000 student netbooks delivered. We're, we're really proud of our emerging business outreach. Last year, we had a goal of 35% EBE outreach, and we exceeded that goal by over 5%. So we raised the bar this year to 40%. And as you can see, as of April, we had exceeded our goal in all subcategories. We all, we just got some new data in that takes us through June, that puts it at 51.1% EBE participation to, at the mid-year point, which, so we're doing, I think we're doing pretty well. And one of the reasons why we're doing well is this micro projects program. What we've done here is we've taken some of the smaller projects that sometimes they're site discretionary requests and other things, and we've packaged them up and used direct to pay agreements and reached out to our small businesses and awarded those projects accordingly. PSA, we, we're not quite achieving the goals that we'd like to there, but we have some strategies to improve. As of June, we've awarded 15 PSA projects, and we, our local worker participation is less than the goals that we set forth. One of the ways that, one of the things we've, one of the ideas that we've used to improve this performance is better tracking of the payroll information. We're, you know, we're, right now, we're just doing, we're sort of counting heads. And what we'd like to do is, is use a certified payroll to do an hour-by-hour analysis of participation to see just how many hours of local worker time is being worked in the Prop S projects. And so we've begun an audit of our certified payroll, and, and that, and we're going to, we'll be providing the board to the, the data to the board in the future. We're also conducting onsite audits, so to get us, you know, more, try to make sure that the data that we receive matches the workers that are actually there on that specific day. We've emphasized the importance of our goals and meeting with contractors and union representatives, and discussed ways of improving participation. And then finally, we're, we're investigating a way of developing a certified payroll submittal system that's automated to improve the efficiency of the data gathering and for worker participation as well as, as labor compliance.
Lee, are you seeing progress on those numbers over the course of the last year? I mean, I know we're not at our goals, but are you seeing the numbers starting to-
I see, I think that the contractors and union is, are really, are making those, are making progress in those areas. It's, it's, you know, they're, they're really, they've really taken this challenge, and I think that they're, they're doing their best. We, I would say the goals are ambitious, and, but, but I think if we continue to work towards them, we can do the same thing we're doing with EB.
It might, it might be helpful in your future quarterly presentations to just give us a sort of a quarter-by-quarter update so we can track progress.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, we can do that.
From my memory, it looks like this is a little bit higher than the previous report.
I believe so.
George Harris?
Yeah.
So at least to be able to see a trend as opposed to just static.
Okay. And so we'll track those to see, but, but they are, the entities, the contractors and the unions are definitely really trying to achieve these goals. We have, this really, this slide goes, you know, really gives you an idea of the, really the broad range and variety of communication tools that we use to reach out to stakeholders. We've conducted over 150 Design Task Force meetings and Site Master Planning meetings in our communities, and, and we really, our Design Task Force really reinforces the emphasis on community engagement that we have for Proposition S.
Is this correct? On the top, it says that the San Diego Taxpayers Association has given us a perfect 100% score for our website for transparency?
That's correct. We have-
Wow. I didn't read about that in the UT.
We put a lot of time and energy into our website because we really value transparency. We want all the stakeholders to be able to get all, at all the information. So we've done a, and, and we were recognized for that, and then, yeah. That's, that's all I have.
If I could just wrap up for Lee, I think that in the main, it's a good news story. On time, under costs is two of the call signs that goes with a large construction bond, and that we've consistently been able to do it in past bonds and are continuing that. But we have to keep our eye on the ball. You saw that tick graph that says things are close. And any economic cycles that go up or down also drive cost of materials, cost of labor, so we need to continue to focus on that. But want to call attention to a couple of things that have been creative, these micro projects. You know, you've probably heard of the International Monetary Fund makes loans on micro kroner, micro dollars, micro something, to give little businesses a chance. I don't use the term negatively mom and pops an opportunity. So, you know, if we can facilitate the emerging business environment that way, I think that's good for us, good for the community. Recognize that if we could be as creative with the PSA participations and the tracking by zip codes, again, that could be another one that's a positive for us. But in the main, we've, we've tried to keep Prop S front of mind, awareness, not only with the district staff, but with the community as a whole. And that website is second to none in terms of transparency and the level of detail for what Prop S is doing. So I think Lee and Phil and their team have been doing a good job.
Mr. Senator, I want to thank you. You know, I've been calling and talking a little bit, but very happy with the numbers, glad to see them going in the right direction. And I'm going to ask Superintendent and Bernie to help to put your press release together that says we're putting San Diego back to work. All right? I think that's, I mean, given the success that we have, I think we should do a press release saying that especially targeting those micro businesses because that's where people are really feeling the crunch and knowing that we, as a district, is looking and helping them would be a great news story for us. Okay?
Thank you.
But thank you again. Happy with the numbers.
Lee, are you seeing any, have you been able to do any cost analysis comparing PSA projects to non-PSA projects since the PSA went into implementation? How are PSA projects comparing cost-wise to non? I understand that-
It's, you know, it's very difficult to measure because every project is bid in a different time period, and the economy is changing constantly. Like recently, we've had a spike in fuel costs, which has really driven all material costs because of transportation. So it's very hard to say, well, this, I mean, when, when we first started a Prop S, we had a very, very good bid climate, and now-
Yes, I'm talking about the period from, since the PSA has been implemented, looking at projects that are above the PSA threshold versus-
So far, all of our projects, except for one recently, have been bid under, under budget, under estimate. We had a project recently that where some of the low bidders dropped out, and we lost a couple of low bidders, and we'd already rebid it once before. And they, and they dropped out because of licensing, contract licensing reasons. It was just a technicality, but we couldn't honor their bids. So, but, but by and large, we, overall, the PSA hasn't been a, hasn't really impacted the program in terms of our ability to execute projects. It's, and it's hard for me to put a value judgment. I haven't seen an impact really, but, but, but so far, it hasn't limited our, our ability to execute projects at all.
Okay.
In fact, if things are going, we've got, you know, the quality of work is excellent. So.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For that update. Okay, and last item, F1, our appointment of representatives to the citizens' redistrict being-
So I will, we appoint the following five representatives to the citizens' redistrict game- So I will, we appoint the following five representatives to the Citizens Redistricting Commission, and they are Pat Hom, Carlos Segretti, Craig Roberts, Jerry Olinger, and Brian Pollak.
All in favor?
Oh, would you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to give, if I, if I could, President Barrera, just give you an update since the last meeting, where we are.
Yeah.
We do have an RFP out for a data consultant that closes on July 14th. I'll be calling this committee that the board has appointed together to participate in looking at the bids around the 18th or 19th of July. On the August 2nd, we'll bring back a contract as a result of the RFP, and then we'll be looking at a schedule in August for this redistricting advisory committee to start looking at the data and working with the consultant and with staff. And so we are moving forward, trying to meet that deadline of getting this project done by the end of September, and hopefully it all goes smoothly. I just wanted to give you an update that we got the RFP out.
Right.
It'll be done on the 14th, and we'll get the committee to look at it right after that.
Can you send me a copy of the RFP, please?
Sure, sure will. We'll send it to the entire board.
Thank you. Thank you, Bernie, thanks very much. Okay, and we have no public test, I'm sorry, Kevin.
I was just under the impression at the last meeting that he said that the Citizens Committee would be involved in the RFP process, and they clearly were not.
Well, and that's, what I did say is they will be involved in looking at the bids when they come in.
Right. If the Citizens Commission should have, in my opinion, should have been a part of the RFP process.
To meet the schedule of the board's decision, that would have delayed it even further, then we wouldn't have gotten it back to meet it. Yeah. Right.
Okay, that concludes our meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, it's fairly, but, yeah, yeah.